Okay, so in our third part of our discussion on literature review or how to write a review of related literature. In the first and second part, we have discussed about from what is knowability, epistemological question, ontological question. From there, we have seen that what is literature review, how it is different from annotated bibliography or chronological or alphabetical list of the works, how it differs from that. Why we have to do, we have to find the gap in the research which our research is going to fill. So that is very important, we have to see that we do not reinvent the will again. And how it can be done, we listed down series of questions in our previous talk, that these questions we have to ask ourselves and try to see whether we are doing all those things or not. Now, in the final, in the final discussion on literature review, we want to see some examples. So practically, how to write or as a part of your PhD coursework, the assignment for three credits that you are supposed to submit, in that assignment, what is expected? So in what format you are supposed to submit your assignment for three credits in paper number one of PhD coursework, that we are here to observe and see here. So writing a literature review for the submission of an assignment here. This is not the final writing for your thesis, but as a part of your assignment submission. Assignment of three credits and how are you going to deal with what you have to do? So there are several steps and what we try to see here in step by step is the process of, of writing literature review. And our assignment is more about the process rather than the end product, rather than the end product. Obviously, you have to submit end product also and you have to make a presentation on the end product in paper number three also. And the end product is what is going to go in your thesis also. But here, we are more concerned about the process of writing literature review. So what are the steps in which we can, we can think of this? The first step, the first step, we will try to see it in six steps, this process of writing literature review. The first one will be, that will be presented in form of a tabular format. The first step will be in form of a tabular format which you are going to submit. So make a table of all works reviewed or considered for review. All works reviewed or even just considered for review. Considered for a review. I will give you an example of how you have to do this. First step will be tabular format of all the works that is there. The second step, the second step here will be making annotated, annotated bibliography. Notated bibliography in the second step. This annotated bibliography can be, can be either of, you can say chronological order, chronological order, or it can also be about alphabetical order. Alphabetical order. As in whatever way you want to, annotated bibliography of all the works that you have listed, after that, out of this, when you will enter into the second step from there, selected one, yes? It will be, you can say here that not all, here there are all, but here from that selected, the selected works will enter into the second and that selected list, you are going to write annotated bibliography. Notated bibliography means there is a paragraph about what that research work is about. There is a small paragraph written about the work of art. So it is a review of the work of art, but this review, this review is completely independent, independent review. Independent from your hypothesis, independent from your thesis statement. It is not connected with those, it is just an independent review of the some selected work of art from this and it can be listed down either chronologically or alphabetically. Can anybody tell me what is the difference between chronological order and alphabetical Anybody can let me know the difference between chronological order and alphabetical order?
Yes sir, I can try. Chronology which may be defined as per the time, it work has been published and alphabetical is through the alphabet like A B C D.
Yeah, yeah, yes, thank you. So this is time according to the publication dates. So in that order, if you put, then it is chronological or alphabetical if you organize with the name of the author, name of the author, then alphabetical, the last name of the author. That way also it can be done. Okay, third, third step. A third step here is to, is to reorganize the order. It is to now order, this was the order here, here in the third step. And see as a, as a part of the process, you have to do all the steps. Reorganize, reorganize the order. Reorganize the order. Now, what should be the guiding, guiding force for reorganization? Here it was either chronological or alphabetical order, we have listed down. But here, what should guide us is our hypothesis. Our hypothesis is supposed to guide us or whatever arguments we are trying to make, whatever arguments we want to make with the help of literature review, that will guide us to move from one to another things and it has to go with the, with the flow of our, our thoughts and flow of our arguments, yes? Flow of our arguments. That is how we have to reorganize. So imagine that I, I am reading an article written in 1996, then 2006, then 2020 and then there is something in 2001 for articles if I am looking at. Now, in chronological order, I have given the date 1996, 2000, 2001, 2020. Now I found that the 2020 article is the first part of my argument and 1996 article is the last part of my trajectory, my trajectory of thought. So now in reorganization, I will write first, the article about that I have reviewed is 2020, then it can be 20, 2021 or 2001 or 2000 or 1996. Depends upon what is your hypothesis, what you are trying to look, what is your, what are your arguments, the flow of the arguments, that all now is re-deciding, deciding you to reshuffle, to reshuffle your order. So here, third one. Now, fourth one. After writing this and reshuffling those paragraphs which are written here, in the fourth point, in the fourth point, what you are going to do is to write introductory and concluding lines. Introductory and concluding lines of all this paragraph. So annotated bibliography which was written here, then it is reorganized, reshuffled and then, and then what we are doing here is writing, writing introductory line and concluding line. What we have to keep in mind here is that while doing this is that we have to hook paragraphs, hook paragraphs. So now this independent paragraphs are now hooked with each other. So my first paragraph will have some introductory lines and then this paragraph will come. As soon as that paragraph ends, I will try to conclude and that conclusion of the previous paragraph or previous review will now connect with the introductory lines of the next review. So those hooking paragraphs, hook the paragraphs at the, the transition, the, the transition from, from one review to another has some flow, has some flow, has some trajectory that okay, you are talking about this and now you are taking further step and then you are doing this and now you are taking third step. So it should not remain independent paragraphs in review, but now they are getting connected with each other and it will happen when you write introductory and concluding lines or hooking paragraphs with each other. So the flow or transition from one paragraph to another or review from another review has a kind of a natural flow, as if an idea is growing, as if a thought is growing, expanding, idea is growing, it is moving in some direction. So there is a kind of a trajectory now. You see here a kind of, of a trajectory which is emerging here, a sort of a trajectory is emerging that you started from here, you are going here, third one, fourth one, fifth one and somewhere you are going to conclude here, where you are finding a kind of a gap, where you are finding a kind of a gap, where you are going to work now. So that was a fourth, now fifth one. Now, the, the fifth, fifth one is that after organizing the trajectory in everything is ready, what you are going to write is concluding paragraph, concluding paragraph. Now, this conclusion is of entire review. This concluding lines were of particular reviews, that was this annotated bibliography. There concluding lines and introductory lines. Now here, you are going to, to write the entire conclusion of your review, what this review was all about and what you are concluding at the end of doing that review. That is your concluding paragraph here and, and then the, the sixth part, the last sixth part is, the finally is that now, now you will write, you will write the introduction, the introduction of the entire review, yes? The introduction of the review. So now see, when you are writing your introduction, you are very well aware that what you are going to conclude. It is very much clear in your mind now that this is your conclusion. So your introduction will, will have a clear cut guidelines or highlights about everything that what you are going to see. So this is six steps here. Now it is, it is said that when you sit down to write this last two points, conclusion and, and introductory lines, you have to be very careful that your thesis statement, thesis statement for which you are working on this literature review should be the last line of introduction and first line of your concluding paragraph. Should be the last line of your introduction and first line of your concluding paragraph. This conclusion should be, the conclusion should be in a, in a, in a very, very, very concrete statement, concrete. This is what you are now concluding, that's how you will start your concluding paragraph and then you will conclude this, okay? So these are, these are the six steps in which the process of literature review is supposed to be done. And when you submit your assignment, you have to submit all the steps. Now this, when this all things are written, now comes final product, where there is introduction, then there is a first paragraph of first review, connecting lines are there, hooking paragraphs, second review, again hooking paragraphs, third review, fourth review, fifth review and then conclusion, that is your final product, end product there. But this process is very important for us in this final submission here. Any question if you have right now here, you can ask. I am going to show you some examples for this. Any, any questions if you have, you can ask me or if the idea is very clear, then we move on. If the idea is clear in your mind about six steps in which you have to write your literature review, the process as a part of submission, yeah? Again, remember as an assignment submission, we want the process. This all, step one, you are doing tabular work. Step two, you are writing the paragraphs are rewritten again here, but you will do because you will type, so there is cut copy paste only then, you don't have to do handwritten work. The same thing will come here. Then fourth, again this content will come repeatedly here, but with introductory and concluding lines and hooking paragraphs that will come here. Then you will write a separate concluding paragraph and then you will write introduction and then final product, you will organize everything, introduction to all the things in the final product. So that you can, if you want to put here, you can say seventh one, seventh one is final literature review. That is what you can say which can be submitted here when everything is reorganized here. Okay, so let me share a screen here, let me share a screen to now show you some of the examples of how this work is to be done. In case of the first one, first one that is tabular format, in case of the first one, This is one example which I have put it on my blog also. So from where you will be able to download this, this is, this is a look at the research on computer-based technology use in second language learning, review of literature from 1990 to 2000. So they have a timeframe also here, review of literature, between this time, they want to review. University of Texas at Austin and there are group of people who has worked, Meanew, Zina Moore, they have worked. Now what for us import, there are 54 pages, but we are going directly at the bottom of this, this document. At the, at the end of this document, we are seeing there that how they have put the tabular format. The other things are right now not important for us. Right now, the other things are not important. We are going to page number 29, directly on page number 29. Now, this is your first part, tabular format, how you have to do. So what they have done, what they have done and you see the scope of literature review. So they have, they have studied several journals and you can see the list of name of the journals for example, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, around 18 journals, 18 journals, the journals which were publishing any write-up or any articles or any research on second language acquisition and technology on that. So 18 journals and in 18 journals during 10 years, that is 1990 to 2000, how many total articles were published? So they have reviewed, they have schemed through as yesterday I was talking about, read abstract. If you find something interesting, but even reading abstract is counted, that number also is counted. Then you go to conclusion or anything, but what you just touch something and you try to review and say, well, this is not useful, that also should be counted. So in that way, total articles which are reviewed here, you can say 284 and that. So total number of articles are 4981, 5000, 5000 articles from 18 journals. Out of that, they found a number of articles relevant, number of articles relevant and that number comes down to 246, 246 or almost 5000. Out of that hardly 5%, hardly 5% of the articles they found relevant, but this has to be put in tabular format. So when you think of tabular format, it will not be 5, 10, 15, 20. You can pick up this example, 5000. It can be more than this also, it can be more than this also, but as we said earlier, there is no limit, there is no limit of literature review. In a given timeframe, how much you can do, that you have to explore, but whatever time you have, you have to use maximum your time to do this work of literature review. So this is one table. Second one, second table here is very interesting. So two tables you are going to present here is a part one. In second one, they are selecting out of 246. What is the final number, let us see. The final number they have worked on ultimately is 20. So earlier there are around 5000, then 246 and out of 246, they found 70, 70 somewhere important. And that 70 articles are, are reviewed here in tabular format, presented here, the reviewed one are presented in tabular format. Now what is this table? So if you see there references, so in the reference column first, the names of the scholars, the names of, in the first column. Second one, research focus. So what were they trying to look, what were their hypothesis, what were they trying to look, that is mentioned there, what they want to see. Clear statement, as we are seeing here, concluding paragraph should have a very clear, strong statement, very strong, clear statement, that is what comes here. So you are, you are drawing out this from the articles or books or thesis that you are reviewing, that this is exactly what this thesis is trying to do. This also will give you an idea that what exactly are you trying to do? What exactly are you, what is your very crystal clear statement about what you are trying to do? That also you can think of, you won't be able to conclude that right now. It will take time, it will, when you will be concluding your thesis, at that time you will get some clear view that this is what I am trying to do. Today, whatever you have are known as hypothesis, hypothetical statements only, you can have which, which are supposed to be very clear statements, but maybe all of you may not be able to draft very clear statements in hypothesis. Then here it is technology used. Now in your work, because you are not doing work on use of technology for teaching language, that is not your work. So what will be your review will be like a theory used, you can say, theory used, theoretical framework, whatever theoretical framework you are using, that you can write here, the theory that you are using. In ELT also, you can say which theory, which methods and approaches you are trying to look for, that you can mention here. Or, or when you are reviewing those things, which, which kinds of methods were used or what kind of theoretical frameworks were used by those scholars, that you can write here. So here it is technology use, but you won't have technology there. So you have to replace technology with theoretical framework used here. Sample size and grade level, sample size and grade level again will not be directly connected with you. For ELT, it will be connected, well, Mega and Kamal are working on this language part. So for them, sample size and that will be very important, grade level standards, which standard this. But for the other, other participants, when you review, you can say how many texts are taken, how many writers are taken, how many works were taken. So that count you can put, this many works, this many poets, this many writers were under consideration, 1, 2, 5, 10, 15, 20, whatever the writers were trying to work on. So in that point, sample size for literature work, when you are reviewing, which works and how many, you can quantify the number of works and writers taken into consideration by those writers, that can be used here. But you can see here, those who are doing work based on the surveys, see some, in some there are thus just 33 students, in some there are 41, 19 students only, if you see number three, only, only 19, only 19 are there. So somewhere 50, so it keeps on changing, somewhere 216. See here, there are five undergraduate French and Spanish students on, number seven, only five, they worked only on five. So this also, this are, because this is, are not thesis, but they are articles. In articles, you can take 5, 10 and do sample study also. So this is how this work and then last, final one, final one is general findings, what are the general findings? See now, see number two was research focus, what they were trying to see and what they have found, what they were trying to see and what they have found. So when you prepare your first step, whatever work you are reviewing, you are listing down a large list, narrowing down, narrowing down. At the second level of narrowing down, you are picking up some 70 other thing. Now as a part of your assignment, you can't do 70. I know that you can't do 70 as a part of your assignment. So we expect that at least 10, at least 10 if you work on, it will be good enough. Now in case you are finding a problem even with 10, but you should never reduce below 5, below 5, it should not be below 5. Our expectation is that you work in this, that is the third level. In the first level, thousands of should be there, then hundreds and then you are coming down to 10. Remember first thousands, then hundreds and then 10. In case you find 10 difficult, then 5, but don't reduce number lesser than 5. So between 5 and 10, you can pick up 6, 7, 8, 9 or 10 for your working out. But this is again only tabular format that you are doing here, okay? That I hope this is clear now. This first step is clear with the, with the, with the help of this example. Okay, now, so now we see second, second step, annotated bibliography. Now annotated bibliography means just simply you pick up a write-up and write something about it, that is simple. So I am not giving you the example of this directly, but in the next one, when we will study this step by step, at that time we will see how it is written. But you remember annotated bibliography means only a kind of summation of the article, summation. So it is a paragraph writing where you say this researchers were working on this, they wanted to look for this, their sample size was this and this where they are finding. From table, you can convert it into annotated bibliography also if you write in paragraph format and it can be in this order. So when you are converting your table into this, if you have done a good work for the table writing, then your research finding and your research focus, that itself will help you in writing paragraph here. So you can write the paragraph and then pick up your idea, whether you want to do alphabetical order or chronological order, that way you can put it. I think chronological order will help you because that will tell you that things are growing as time passes, things are supposed to grow, but sometimes things do not grow also and we find that well, something done in 1996 is more relevant than what is done in 2006 also. Sometime it may happen, but you can go by chronological order if you wish to see in that way. That will be second step here. Now, now what we have to do, let me share one, one very interesting example. This one is with example coming from, let me open this. Psychology, psychology. So the content wise, it may not be directly useful to us, but we are trying to look at how we can frame our, our writer, okay? So I am sharing the screen. Yeah, okay. Are you able to see the screen that I am sharing here?
Yes sir.
Yeah, okay. So this is writing a short literature review, William Ashton, York College, yeah? So you can see here, there are different colors which are used. Now if you will take a printout in black and white, then you perhaps may miss out the different colors. So the PDF copy will help you that there is a, and given there. A student begin a short literature review on the stigma of mentally ill and perceptions of dangerousness. Mentally ill people, we have a kind of perception that they are dangerous people, we have to be careful, otherwise they may attack. So then it's a stigma, it is not reality, it is not a reality, but it's a kind of a stigma in society. And so, so we try to be extra careful with the mad people, so we, we tend to see that they will attack, they will attack. So they are stigmatized in that way, on, on that aspect, this, this literature review is done. This mentally ill, stigma of the mentally ill and perceptions of dangerousness. But as I told you, subject is not very important for us, but you can, you can write this way that well, I am trying to do literature review of this and then you are looking, that can help you, that can help you that this is what I am trying to literature review. So when you try to look at your alphabetical order or, or this tabular format also, your own review, that how you are trying to do, your hypothesis, your argument, that all can be narrowed down in this way, in your selection of the articles. Working through psych articles, she found three likely articles, the example is about three. Remember, we have to do with 5 or 10, but before we come here, we have to do the first step. This is second step that we are working. we have to do the first step this is second step that we are working second third fourth fifth all these steps will be given in example this example second example for second to sixth will come in this example don't forget the first one so when she read each she wrote a paragraph description of each so when suppose you have done five and then now you are writing paragraph description so Alexander so and so with APA style MLS style you are writing the detail and then you are saying what this article was about see Alexander and link examined uh see how this is that third person view of writing third person with that Alexander and examine the stigma of mental illness and and all those things so that is that paragraph given there second one Corrigan Corrigan Robin Green second one so again it comes there and it is given here Corrigan Robin Green and they conducted two studies and they have done this work annotated bibliography this is there then the third one Martin Martin JK and they have work and then there is a paragraph of annotated bibliography okay so that is second step that is done here it can be chronological alphabetical order whatever way you want to write this paragraphs it they are written there okay second step okay now next see the black color black color instructions next he decided upon the order of the paragraph reorganizing the order decided upon the order of the paragraphs in the paper so well Martin examined the effect is putting first that is reorganizing the order now Martin earlier was number three Martin was number three but now you are putting Martin number at number first then you are putting the second one Alexander who was first now become second and and third one Corrigan is the now it this this reorganization depends upon your hypothesis your argument your flow of thoughts your trajectory what you want to see how you want to see that way you are reorganizing this one so this was second step a third step here reorganizing the order uh now again see the black letters here she carefully choose the order or reorder we can say of the paragraph so she could talk about now see this paragraph these lines are very important which you are supposed to write that if you want to say I have reorganized this with one two three this point so first was that people respond to mentally ill with fear and rejection contact reduces both rejection and fear and how to best arrange the contact to reduce stigma that is how you say that the idea has to flow in this way first people respond with fear and rejection second one here and rejection can be reduced and third one then stigma can also be reduced so that was the flow the thing and based on that flow the reorganization is done now in this step you are justifying how you have reorganized if somebody is asking you that why this organization then you will say well because of the I am seeing in this way and I am now getting my points together my dots are getting clear trajectory is getting clear at this point now she added introductory point number four added introductory and concluding sentences paragraph hooks and short transition paragraphs to help the flow of ideas now independent reviews now will get hooks paragraph hooks and this so see the the red letter there is a dark red letter you see there uh regarding the mentally ill it appears that people respond to the mentally ill with feeling of fear and rejection then now the review Martin examine the effects see the introductory line I think this example helps you in knowing what is introductory line and then this paragraph comes our first review comes now now then this review when it ends then you say thus that is concluding line your concluding line thus a common response to the mentally are rejection and fear of violence that is your concluding line for first review now by the time you are beginning second one now when you begin the second one again you say while based upon research you are putting a small paragraph this is called paragraph hook this is paragraph a hook small and then after writing that paragraph now you are coming to the second review and see there after examined there are some words added contact with the mentally ill and the stigma of this this addition is to connect this second review with the first review so that there is a flow from first to the second so something of the first should continue with the second so it doesn't look like this is coming out of blue sky suddenly something is coming down it doesn't look like a dead and then the second paragraph is concluded in any contact with the mentally ill few more things are written however since this study was observational in nature we cannot know it contact if contact reduces fear and so and so then the third one conducted two studies addition which was not done earlier red letter is addition at this fourth step fourth step and then the the fourth one the final one is concluded thus Corrigan at all demonstrated the contact you causes less rejection and fear so according to your trajectory now your final point is concluding here so the third review which was independent earlier now is getting concluding lines but still it is it is still separate only this three reviews are still separate it is still not a part of complete review so let us see now in the final stage in the final stage but it is first fifth fifth point in the final stage she needs to write an introductory and concluding paragraph now of entire review she wrote the concluding paragraph first right concluding paragraph first and and this is what you have to do even in your thesis also this is also uh introduction even if you start with introduction you will have to rewrite your introduction after concluding because introduction will be written in the first year and conclusion in the third year and there is a lot of gap between conclusion and 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 sorry introduction and conclusion so when you were writing introduction there were different thoughts in your mind and when you are concluding there is altogether different thoughts so again from there you have to go back to your introduction and you have to rewrite your introductory thing so it is always good to start with review of literature and do analysis and conclude and then come back to write your introductory chapter uh so in this paragraph she needs to overview the paper and make a conclusion so she is making the conclusion it appears that see this is very important word it appears that it seems to be probably that is what you don't make those statement that this is red this is blue it is not is it is probably it appears to be that is the linguistic markers of academic writing this is exactly what students are learning in this academic course academic course because I think that academic writing is a part of this paper also so we will have to ask you to join later on now the first sta- stage is already running so now there is no purpose in joining but after this ends maybe in the month of February we will ask you to join so you also get an idea about academic writing and all this linguistic markers what is the value of it appears why we have to write appears here that is what we call it as linguistic markers in academic writing so this is this is the paragraph this is concluding paragraph written here now see black letters now she needs to say something about the research methods so she will be writing about caution must be advised about these things the student then brought her draft to me the teacher is writing now the draft came to me after I read it I asked her about the first sentence of her conclusion I asked her if she could phrase it as a clear and strong statement and then she wrote the rejection of the mentally ill is caused by the public's belief in myths about the dangerousness of so and so kind of a thing very clear statement in in conclusion there now now she needs to write the introduction this is the sixth step now you write your introduction with an introduction begin broad and and begin broad and narrow down to the thesis statement apply the deductive method deductive method here general and from general to narrow down to your thesis statement which ultimately you want to conclude now you know what is your conclusion so it is very easy now to make your thesis statement the thesis statement is the last sentence in the introduction and the first sentence in the conclusion your conclusion begins then with with that uh so this is written introduction is written here separately separate introduction is written and here is how seventh step the whole paper looked whole paper how it looked that comes here so title also now you get a clear title about your literature review also so when you write final draft also title title of your review and then the full paper will come here that what is introduction and from introduction to how it moves in that so this this example will help you to submit your assignment and if this assignment is done properly then it itself can become a paper for publication this your write up if it is done very properly then that itself becomes something very important to be published and it is expected that these kinds of papers are to be written and published this kind of of reviewing one then you can review this another group of things and then another thing that you are doing if you have three hypothesis you have to write three literature review to to think of your hypothetical statement and you can publish three papers in that way about what you have done review and how you are working out on those things also so that is one of the ways that what is expected when you publish something based on your research work one idea is about your literature review that how you are working and how you are finding the gap for your for your hypothetical statements which you are working on there any questions here any questions anybody in this second second we have seen when in a thoroughly this example proves that what it can be done now I want to show you one more example where you can see that how it can be written the final one then how you can write it down huh yeah this is one example let me share it's quite well written one the final product this example is about the final one that how it can be submitted yeah this is taken from one chapter of PhD and this also has done a good review and presented here this is a review of literature and research design so this second chapter review of literature that this is written in the initial part so it refers to government documents also you can see here that government of India rural development poverty elevation programs have been so and so kinds of thing NABAD RBI so if need be if need be all this thing also can be referred then see various studies see this is the writing in paragraph format this is your final final product final product various studies undertaken by distinguished scholars have have broadened the understanding of the related issues for example now when you say various studies now you have to say at least few you have to give an example so when you write various studies people will question that well at least name ones one or two or three if you say various then you have to name more which are there so you start writing now for example Hanumanth Rao nineteen ninety four interrelated five themes then you say that similar study was carried out by Manikumaran in the state of Tamil Nadu then you say Bina Agarwal analyze the interrelation between all those kinds of things so uh so this is the relation between poverty and all those things is done by Dariyappa Prakash nineteen ninety six nineteen ninety seven this so this is writing in detail things the poor farmers put tremendous amount of planning labor so and so Prakash comes there the another example is Joda nineteen eighty six defines C yeah okay so form call in between yeah hmm yeah okay so this also so Joda nineteen eighty six defines CPR so and so kind of thing then then see each and every paragraph Tony Beck and so and so here is talking about this so this is that the final one that when you are writing in paragraph format you mix up everything see so what you will see is that earlier when you were writing earlier when you were writing the paragraphs here you were you were showing now is my screen presented or not now are you able to get my voice
Yes sir
Yes sir
yeah screen is still presented or not now
Yes sir it is presented
It is presented
I am still presenting the screen yeah I think there was some network problems so it was getting disconnected okay okay so this is the example that we are seeing that paragraph format how it can be written when you were writing so it is not chronological or this but the way you want to use that material the way you want to use that specific material in that context you are supposed to use this thing so no order is required the whatever arguments you are making to support your argument you are using literature to support your argument and remember the same thing you have to keep on doing when you do analysis also one of the major error or mistake that is found is that that people consider literature review as something separate and then when they write the core chapters they don't at all look at literature review then why have you done all these reviews so you have picked up some people theories ideas and when you do analysis you have to constantly keep on using this material that is there it is not some something a separate chapter of the thesis it is an integral part and so whatever you have observed you have to keep on using it when you are making the analysis in your core chapters you have to keep on citing that so and so person which we referred in literature review was saying this we are seeing this here we agree with that we disagree with that here there is a problem in the proposal Yeah, there is a problem in in the proposition that was established by so and so person. Now we are seeing such kind of things here, the same way, but you have to keep on referring and mentioning the the any words which are reviewed in in literature, a review. Okay, so that will that will be, I think, a clear cut idea about what you have to submit as a assignment also. As well as what you are supposed to write in your thesis as literature review. As we discussed earlier, it is very important part, almost we can say twenty percent of your thesis. And three credits of your paper number one of your PhD coursework. So either way, literature review is very, very important. And the way we mentioned earlier, if the best quality literature review is done, then there are chances that your research work can be of excellent quality. Most of the researchers are poor only because they don't do proper literature review. That is how literature review is very, very important for all kinds of researches there. Any question? Questions if you get from the blog link that is given, from there you will be able to download all these documents to keep it as a handy, ready reference when you work on this. Okay, any questions? Is it clear then to write? Is it clear or not?
Yes, sir, is it clear? And I have one too small question. Basically, it is a factual one. As you have recently talked about the thesis statement, our hypothesis statement should be very strong. But as we have mentioned in the proposal, that it is a very tentative hypothesis. So how can we make a stronger hypothetical statement? Or what is basic difference between that research hypothesis and null hypothesis?
Now see, research hypo, null hypo, that will be the end of the result that you will find, that where your hypothesis is going properly or not. Once, again, in that case, you have to be very contextual, what work you are work. Here, when you talk, you see terms of general, that this is because here you have to think of also literature as well as other part, both the things you have to see. So when you try to make, for example, what is your statement, if you can tell me, what what kind of things you have written as a statement?
Yes, tentatively I have written that the appropriate syllabus that is exist in this BVO course.
Is that if that becomes clear?
Yes, yes. The appropriate syllabus and flexible pedagogy of present BVO course has a great importance in create more employability opportunity and providing reach experience on the job training to the students. And that's why they are gaining more jobs. So that will be just tentative hypothesis.
Hmm, okay, so you are trying to say are you getting my voice?
Yes, now it's clear.
Yeah, yeah, there is a slow network, so there is See, see this, this example here. Now this example can can help you in understanding your hypothesis or not. I have shared in the in the this chat link. Or can put your hypothesis. Yes, if you can put here or you can see this to understand this. Yes, are you getting? Are you putting your hypothesis here, Komal?
Yes, sir, I have to write it into the chat.
Chat, yeah, chat, yeah, because some words are breaking, so I'm not getting full statement.
Yes, just a minute time.
This method of looking at null hypothesis or alternative hypothesis will not be future. For them it is not because this is more about statistical analysis. When you are doing statistical analysis, then whether the statistical results are supporting your hypothesis or not. So it is based on that, that how you try to, which tools of statistics you are using and how you are getting those things. So people use this in social sciences a lot, that how the statistics are proving the things there. There are always limitations of statistical tools to prove anything. There are, the limitations are always there in that also. Okay, so now if you say that well, they have a good syllabus which is preparing for the, now when you will do study and if your study also finds that statistically also, if you are getting like number of one thousand students, you are looking at them and then all are getting job, then your hypothesis will be null hypothesis. Yes, it is agreed upon that. Proposes that there is a difference, there is a difference, then you will say it is alternative. Null hypothesis is a type of conjecture used in statistics that proposes that there is no difference between certain characteristics of a population or data generating process. So the population that you are taking for your survey. There is no difference, it goes well with that and you say it is null hypothesis. Other, if you find another thing, then you will say alternative hypothesis in that context and so hypothesis testing with the statistical tools, it provides a method or reject a null hypothesis within a certain confidence level. So within a certain level of the mean that you find in the statistical, you can say whether it is a null hypothesis or not. So that way you try to do the survey and then you are getting the results. So it is tested with the help of statistical tools. And then whether it agrees or not, that is what you can say. So a simple example, if you, here is one example that is given is about gambling, gambling and the chance. You can also say that than boys, girls are more sincere than boys. Now you are testing it and you are doing, you are collecting what is the result of this and you have taken the data of hundred girls and hundred boys and you found that it's then your hypothesis is null, it agrees with that, your statistics is agreeing with your hypothetical statement. But it, when you will question that will take to look at the thing, you can have more questions about it and you can, when you ask that, well sincere, academic sincerity, I would like to judge in terms of whether they are getting good jobs or not. And then what is the salary of, if that is my definition of that, then again I will, my statistical analysis will be about how many of them are doing job. Person, PhD, whatever, how many are doing the the jobs and then boys are in more number than girls, then there is alternative hypothesis, your hypothesis is challenged in that context, that girls are more sincere academically, it doesn't get materialized into jobs. If your definition of that is not only mark shifts, but whether they are working or not, then it is a different alternative hypothesis you are getting.
Yes, yes, sir, I'm getting.
Yeah, okay, any other questions?
Yes, sir, I have another question. Yes, when I talk to some people and regarding the this citation style, that is very factual one.
Yes, so put in the chat because I am
Okay, okay, sir, I'm good.
Yeah, you can speak also, but the voice here. Yes.
Yes, I have put in the chat as well, that some are saying that reference and works cited are similar or some saying this two are different. So bibliography, I know that is different from works cited and reference, but what is basic difference between this works cited and reference?
That is work referred or work cited, you can say. Now that idea or words or paragraph, you will say that it is work directly cited. If the works are for directly as such any passages or words or other kinds of thing, then we can say references, reference. Normally people use references and works cited together, they use both the word together. Bibliography is completely different, but a reference and works cited can be used interchangeably, interchangeably it can be used.
Okay, thank you, sir, it's clear.
The difference, it is that what you are referring to and what you are citing, exact citations and references. Yes, any 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 other questions, anybody? So we we end our session here about literature review and this and now when also we will try to see possible, otherwise I will send a message in WhatsApp about this session. I think link will remain common, we will not change the link, but whenever we have some discussion even tomorrow, but just wait for the WhatsApp message for that.